... meeting to order. The invocation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson and the pledge by Councilmember Rizzi.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered together this very warm evening to perform city business. We ask for your oversight for us and our staff. Help us as we work together to continue to keep this community a place where everyone enjoys. We will continue to work to keeping our community, one that strives to live, work, and get along together. We also want to express our support, excuse me, for certain, to everyone who was involved in the Virginia Beach incident. Please give them strength to the survivors and families and friends of everyone who lost their lives during this sad event. Give everyone the strength as they recover and celebrate the lives of everyone. We also want to ask for your hand and support to one of our community's former city council members, Mr. Joe Dubois, with the passing of his wife, Maria. Please be with him and their friends and family as they celebrate her life. We also want to ask for your continued hand to protect them, for our community, first responders, as they continue to protect us and our lifestyle. We also extend this to our military members, wherever they are serving throughout the world, and bring them all home safe each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Schroder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that Resolution Number 19-18 and intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the procurement of a street sweeper recently awarded to the city through a congestion mitigation air quality grant be approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor?
Does anyone have any announcements of current events? We'll start on this side today.
Yeah, I was able to spend all morning Sunday at our local Flatiron Park, and I just want to commend our staff for what a wonderful park and how well they maintain it. And it's just such an enjoyable thing to just sit there for while I was playing with granddaughter, but enjoying the scenery and the people walking around, walking their dogs, playing games, playing on the splash pad and everything. Just a great facility that we get to enjoy. The one thing that I did, while I was sitting watching my granddaughter, was watching the traffic go by, and the vast majority of the people actually obeyed the speed limits, and that's a great thing to see, you know, because it just, you know, that ten to fifteen seconds that it takes, if you follow the speed limit, that ten to fifteen seconds that it takes to go that distance as opposed to going faster could save a life and a lot of misery for a lot of people, so, thank you.
Gail?
No.
Chip?
Yes. I have been, I would say, sitting on the League of Cities and Towns Public Works and Transportation Advisory Committee, and one of the things that was coming up, and they're looking for support on this, and it really was a rude awakening, and one of the things that we, as our community, don't have to face, and that's the city of Nogales. Nogales is sitting right on the border, and they're down, I'll say, down the hill from the Mexican side of the border. And back in 1944, the U.S. government made an agreement with the surrounding area to bring in their sewage into the United States and treat it, because Nogales was sitting on the downward side and receiving all this stuff. Now, the community over there on the Mexican side has gotten so much bigger, and the sewage flow is at such a tremendous amount that they have sewage manhole covers that are popping off, and raw sewage is coming out into the streets, and they have some major problems. And of course, all this is done by United States International Boundary Water Commission, and they need approximately 48 million to repair the nine-mile pipe, which the U.S. government wants Nogales to pay. And the population down there is not good, so when we get all upset with the idea of things happening in our community, just thank goodness we're not on the border in the aspect of having to face issues like this, because 48 million just to repair a pipeline is, for nine miles of pipeline, is awful.
Krista.
Yeah, Your Honor, just wanted to congratulate all our high school graduates throughout the community. We've got several high schools, Imagine Prep, Apache Junction Unified School District and Apache Trail. Congratulations to all those kids that made it. They graduated a couple weeks ago. Many of them received scholarships. It's just incredible to see the amount of scholarships and the dollar amount that these kids receive. Coming up on the second Saturday, our chamber is doing a new event at our local Flatiron Park, second Saturday. I believe it's, they have movies, but they have arts people out there with different booths and some different activities and food trucks, so watch for that on second Saturdays. And also, we have our Founder's Day meeting coming up, and that's a little bit different than the Centennial when the state became a state. This is when Apache Junction became a city and a town, and so we're looking to have people join those committees for Founder's Day, and we have that usually at the library. You can contact Braden Briggs, he's our chairman of that committee, and we want to have celebrations throughout the whole year of 2022. You can contact him on Facebook, so, thank you.
Robert, do you have one?
Nothing today.
Any big fish?
I don't fish in town.
Okay. All right. All right. Robin?
Okay. At our last meeting, we had, we gave, we honored Marta St. James, who left a big endowment, and she worked so hard and really took our paws and claws under her wings, and it never really got mentioned that she didn't really even live in the city. She actually lived in Gold Canyon, and I just wanted to show how great that is that people outside the city can help. Also, our own Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, that the city is a part of, won this year the Airport of the Year for Arizona for that class, which is pretty big, actually. So, that's really big news. They're going to be doing some T-shirts. I don't know if everybody can buy those or not. I'll get some info. And as Krista mentioned, Founder's Day, there's going to be a meeting on, it's going to be Thursday at six. Now, this is not closed. We're going to take the help whenever anybody can jump in. This is at the library in our main big meeting room, six o'clock. Maybe you don't know, maybe you don't want to do it, but maybe you know somebody that would be perfect for this, so invite them to come out, and we'll find something for them to do, especially as it gets closer to the day. And then also, Vice Mayor Wilson, and I believe Councilmember Struble was there, although I did not see him, I heard rumors that he was there. We all attended at the Memorial Day, not really a celebration, it's not a celebration on Memorial Day, it's a remembrance. And this is at Mountain View Cemetery, which is close to Sausman, but it's basically Apache Junction's cemetery, and all of the service organizations from Apache Junction go, and they put it on. This year, it was VFW 7968, and it kind of rotates between the Legion and 9399. So next year, try to get out there and take children with you. We really need to pass on the tradition to the children to go to this. And also, while we're on this, don't forget Veterans Day. After the parade, we do a really honor, really awesome celebration at Flatiron Park. So a lot of people go home, but they have guest speakers, they have like retired generals and POWs, and they really have some moving stories. And I have one more. This morning, I was getting my lunch at Jack in the Box drive-thru, and I looked over into that lot in between Jack in the Box and Superstition Harley, and I see some homeless people out there, I thought, doing something under a tree, and they had a dog with them that I thought was cute. And as I'm leaving, I drive, and I said, "Those aren't homeless people." So I pull back around, I go all the way back through Jack in the Box, I come out, and I pull up to them, and it's a mother and a daughter, the elderly mother, and they're out there picking up trash. I said, "What are you doing?" He said, "We walk here almost every day, and we just come and try to pick up trash every week." And I said, "Well," I said, "I'm the mayor, and that's awesome." And I should have asked if I could take their picture and get their names, but I don't think they really wanted that. They just do it because it's the right thing to do, and I just wanted to say thanks to them. So, City Managers' report.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we have someone noticeably missing tonight, our City Manager, Brian Powell. He was not able to be here tonight and ask that I fill in his spot, so I'd also like to recognize Anna McCray in our office, our Assistant to the City Manager, who's sitting where I usually sit. So we're thankful that she's here, can support here. And I also think it's important to recognize Jennifer Penney and her continued assistance as Kathy Conley, our City Clerk, is out dealing with some personal issues, so thank you, Jennifer, for continuing and filling in this role. Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple items, but first, I'd like to invite up Mr. Bob Mole and Meyer Garcia from the Apache Junction Food Bank to give us a report on a recent food drive that was very successful, and then I'll have a couple more items after
Thank you for inviting us to join tonight. This was a delightful surprise. This is not an unknown event. Some of you have been at that event for the last two or three years since I've been participating, but on May 11th, we had our most successful postal drive yet. A lot of thanks goes out to postal patrons for the food donations, special thanks to our dedicated staffers, Jim Jones, Hill Lee, our bookkeeper, Jim is our warehouse manager, Sharon Brown, our board member who ran the food drive, incredible food bank volunteers, and local sponsors and participants. Again, thank you, Mayor Sertie. Again, you were there. Councilwoman Evans, thank you for coming by. Brian Powell was there. Our Chief of Police was there, sorting food. Our Fire and Rescue Chief, Mike Farber, also Lennahand, and many of the firemen were there. Major local sponsors, we couldn't do this without our sponsors and participants. Of course, the postal service, all 50 route men and women were there in competition. Fries Food couldn't do it without them. They gave us 30,000 fries bags like last year that we could actually send out to all of our public with cards about the event and needs. Antrim Air, Los Gringos provided lunch bags for all of the postal workers. SkyMed, AZ Happy Trails, Gold Canyon Rotary Club, the Paseo, and the American Express Global Business Travels helped sponsor it. Postal carriers in Apache Junction and Gold Canyon collected 39,000 pounds of food left at mailboxes. The last 7,000 came in from local donations that allowed us to buy four pallets of water on a very good sale from Bob Zimmerman at Fries. All donations went to the Apache Junction Food Bank, where over 100 volunteers, and several of you know, were on hand to sort, and it is manic, and they come in five trucks at a time, and we've got garbage, we've got food baskets everywhere lined up tracking it. The sorted stock, there's considerable influx of non-perishable donations. It's, it might seem like in the summertime when the snowbirds leave that everything kind of goes down, but for us, it goes up because children are out of school. During the summer months, we need more food than ever to help families with young children who do not have access to the free or reduced breakfast and lunch programs when school lets out. So the food drive helps us start the summer with a fully stocked warehouse. Food supplies deplete quickly as families rely more on food banks and kitchens for access to healthy nutritious food. Locally, nearly one in five children are at risk and go hungry. So since 2013, when we first started participating in the postal drive, and I was not on the board at that point, that year, we took in, in comparison, 15,836 pounds. This year, we were number one in the entire East Valley. The second postal service behind us was the Flagstaff, and I don't know how they kind of gate these various postal services, but Flagstaff at 26,600, and behind them was the Scottsdale Hobie Post Office at 18,140. Every year except one year, our intake has increased. Last year, it was 31,518, this year, 39,000, so it's incredible. 14% of this postal area's entire food drive collection of 274,000 pounds, 14% came to the Apache Junction, through the Apache Junction public patrons and postal service. So it was absolutely incredible, and so we thank you.
Unbelievable. Thank you.
And anyone can come help, right, that day? How does that work?
Well, first of all, we solicit all of our internal volunteers, then we reach out to schools, we reach out to commerce, Walmart's had a team there, Fries has had a team there, of course, public service, the Fire Department, the Police Department have had teams there. We reach out to churches, we've talked about anybody. There is a point at which you can have too many volunteers, because it gets a little crazy to organize, and as you well know, from the line of sorting and everything, there's so many spots, but people burn out after an hour or two of sorting cans, and so to have that rotation.
So if any individuals want to help, they should just stop by during the week.
Absolutely.
And you'll find something for them to do.
And next year, Meyer will put out an article in both the papers, letting them know that it's coming up, and we're asking for volunteers, and they can actually call for information and sign up.
And it's a Saturday, and I could tell that some of the postal workers are kind of annoyed at it, so next year, I'm going to have my store do a gift certificate to the winner. Maybe Councilmember Struble can give a pizza to the winner, just to give.
That would be wonderful.
Make it, take a little bit of the annoyance out of there. Hey, if I get the most, I get something, so.
Yeah. It's always the second Saturday in May.
All right.
Your Honor?
Yes.
You know, I was so impressed with the volunteers that were there in the morning. I worked with a team, it was a husband, wife, two teenage daughters, and they were from Chandler. Their business was in Chandler.
That was the Antrim Air people.
Yes, and they say they tried to come every year, and I thought that was how great that they would bother to come out here to help.
They're a huge sponsor to the food bank, and they are to the golf tournament also every year, so we were real blessed to have sponsors like them.
Absolutely. They were a great group of people.
What I thought was really great is each year, we get a card in our mailbox. This year, we got a card with a tape to a bag. I mean, they couldn't have made it any easier for people to fill those grocery bags.
And she had about, I don't know, half a dozen or so volunteers tearing those bags off of the rolls from Fries and taping every one of those cards on and putting them back in postal baskets to then get back to the postal service to go out with the mail people.
Paid off. You got 6,000 more pounds, it sounds like.
We did. We did. We tried to make it easier and easier and bring more visibility to it.
Thank you.
Great job.
When's your next golf tournament?
It is December 7th at Gold Canyon.
And who, how many participants do you guys allow come in or?
It dropped off about 30% last year. We had actually 15 foursomes on the Sidewinder, and we had 34 foursomes on the Dinosaur, and this year, we did not have enough, so we consolidated both to the Dinosaur, and I think we had 34 foursomes in total this year, but it was still very successful.
Cool. Yeah, that's a great way to support.
Come join us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob and Meyer, for coming tonight. I think this short presentation really highlights not only the great organizations and their staff members and volunteer boards that we have in our community, but also what a giving community Apache Junction is, and so thank you for highlighting that and for the great work you do. I did want to acknowledge Vice Mayor Wilson, thank you for, in your prayer, acknowledging the terrible tragedy in Virginia Beach, that city. As municipal employees, we're very mindful of that, and the ripple effect it has on those communities that go through those tragedies are great, and so our thoughts and prayers are obviously with them, and thank you for mentioning that. Just a reminder for City Council, June 17th is your final budget adoption, that's your next Monday night meeting. And finally, Al, if you'll pull up a picture or two that we had prepared, we had a recent honor given to one of our staff members here, one of your employees, your direct employees, Mr. Joel Stern. He is the recipient of the first-ever Distinguished Municipal City Attorney Award, and this is given by his peers to him of the Arizona City Attorney Association. We happen to have the actual real deal here, and it's a great honor to be named this, and we thought it important to highlight for Mr. Stern, as well as the community, that we have great people working here at the city that do great work, and his peers thought the same.
Speech.
I don't think it's on the agenda. I will say, it's a team effort, my staff, and also the City Manager and his staff, and also the City Council. Great group of bosses, so thank you very much.
Well, this will look good on your resume.
Are you telling me something?
Your Honor, that concludes my report.
Okay, consideration of application for new Series 9 liquor store license for Elodea George Curry, Apache Junction Minimart, is going to be Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This liquor license application is for the Apache Minimart located at 2925 West Superstition Boulevard here in Apache Junction. This is a Series 9 liquor store license. It is actually a transfer. They recently purchased the Apache Minimart from the previous owner. Staff has gone out and done onsite inspections, as well as the Superstition Fire and Medical District. All the comments have been received. They're all recommending approval of the license. The owners are here, if you have any questions, and they are currently working on their business license for the city.
Is, would the applicant like to say anything? You don't have to, but you can. You can give your business a plug if you like.
No, you, no, you, no, you.
Yeah, we've been, we just bought the business like under 15, but actually, me and my wife, we've been running the business since 2013, so nothing changed. We are actually the owners, you know?
Okay.
But we just got the money and we bought it from the previous owner, and we appreciate Apache Junction. We've been, you know, we have five employee right now, and we proved the store, and it was nothing, it was actually a dollar store, and we spent over $600,000 to prove it, and we pay our taxes, and we doing our best to succeed in this major, you know, store, so.
Cool, that's great. I'll try to stop in in the next couple days.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion among council? This is a public hearing, would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, go ahead.
I move that the applicant for a, or, for a, or a new Series 9 liquor license, or license for Eldra George, oh gee.
Cory.
Cory?
Cory.
For the Apache Minimart located at 2925 South Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes, it's West Superstition, not South.
Oh, I'm sorry, West.
Just to clarify them.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I think eight, nine, and 10 may run long, so we're going to move Number 11 ahead of those. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of acceptance of Apache Junction Strategic Plan on Homelessness.
And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you meant to move them to the end, because there is an item, Number 12 and 13, too, that also involve Heather and the Health and Human Services.
But we don't have his staff on, the same staff on that as well?
Heather is on one of them, and the Health and Human Service Commission member is here to hear your decision.
So we'll do 12 and 13, and then we'll come back to, we'll do eight, nine, and 10 at the very end. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This evening is to discuss the strategic plan on homelessness that was recently completed. This is a community effort. This is not a strategic plan for the city itself, but as a community, so we are encouraging all the organizations in the community and those that participated in this process to take the information back to their boards and review it and discuss it and encourage them to approve it so that we can all come together and do this together. The strategic plan process, basically, there were five different sessions, there were 30 different people that participated in the process. We did receive some financial support from the Arizona Department of Housing in Pinell County in order to pay for a facilitator. The idea of the strategic plan is that we use that and carry it up to Pinell County. Pinell County is going to be putting together their own plan, so Casa Grande, AJ, and then the county, bringing it all together to have a very comprehensive countywide plan to address homelessness. Pinell County does have a continuum or a group that they call the Pinell County Coalition to End Homelessness, and we, of course, have our homeless, Apache Junction Homeless Coalition that did this plan. So within the plan, we focused on five key areas, and we created some subcommittees. Each subcommittee varies, there's probably like five different people, five or six people under each committee, so I just wanted to sort of go over these. The plan- The plan is, is that each subcommittee will be working on different tasks and goals and then be reporting regularly on what's going on during our monthly homeless coalition meeting. We will also do some presentations and discussions during our semi-annual mayor's breakfast. So the first subcommittee is the Outreach Committee, and their purpose, as it states here, is to achieve some compliance with individuals and making sure that they can connect them to the necessary resources. They want to be able to educate and share all of the available resources to people who are not necessarily service providers. And so this could be businesses in the community that may come across people that want to share resources with people who are struggling. Also provide some education services to people who are currently homeless or who are at risk. And that would be soft skills, so a lot with how to maybe have a roommate, how to have, get into a place to rent, how to maintain that, how to pay the bills, those sort of soft skills so that they can be successful and stay housed. And then also creating a sort of a network with the outreach teams. So there are different organizations like Horizon, or Community Bridges, or La Frontera, they all have outreach teams. And so just working a network amongst those who are out on the street every day, looking for and helping this population. The next subcommittee is the Collaboration Group, which is essentially a bridge between agencies and the community and people. Their main focus is to really develop and grow a more comprehensive database of resources. So there are several smaller ones that are not entirely consistent, that may not have information for our community. And so they're going to be working to make sure that all of the information is together, available, and shared with everybody so that we all have the information to share. The next subcommittee is Employment, and their purpose is to help people who are struggling to find gainful employment. And so they're going to look at different opportunities and ways to provide employment for the homeless. Some same-day, same, you know, same-day pay programming, working with some day labor agencies to encourage them to work more with the homeless population. And find opportunities for people who have some disabilities and get them employed. A lot of the homeless population or at-risk do suffer from some issues, and so this is just another way to encourage and help them find some employment. And certainly, working with the businesses here in the community to share that there are opportunities for business owners to employ certain populations of people. And definitely addressing basic needs. So if you don't have an address, you don't have a way to wash your clothes, you don't have a way to get your mail, getting employment is really hard, so figuring out ways to provide all of those basic services. The next subcommittee is Housing, and so this is to make sure that everybody has access to some type of housing. And so up here, there's a variety of different things that they will look at. And actually, it was discussed last night during the work session about some microhousing, so that is an option. There is currently not a rental rehabilitation program here in the city. There are some opportunities through the state, but encouraging that and building and growing that. Temporary shelter programs, so figuring out a way to maybe get somebody into a hotel in the case of an emergency until they can get back on their feet, or connecting them with organizations that can keep them housed. Shared housing, so this is kind of a new concept and a lot to figure out on how you can share housing. And whether that just be, you know, two people who are homeless or somebody who's taking in a homeless person, whatever it may look like, and so that's something that they're going to look at. And then there is an eviction prevention program. Community Action Human Resource Agency is one of the recipients from the state of Arizona to promote and expend funds for eviction prevention. Simply because Pinal County, specifically Apache Junction, Santan Valley, and Casa Grande have the highest eviction rates in the state. So Cora was the recipient of those funds to make sure that they could keep people in their homes. And last is the Policy Subcommittee. So that is looking at ways our local policy, county, state, and federal policy can make positive change in the lives of the homeless and those who are at risk. So establishing maybe policies around programs. We've heard in the past that some communities provide jobs. Tucson and Albuquerque, I want to say Albuquerque, they do provide job programs for people. Transportation opportunities, and then some sheltering opportunities. So looking at policies and establishing some programs that may work with that. Also, educating people on the existing policies that we have, any ordinances, and looking at and seeing if there's any areas of change that we could make here at the local level. And certainly, you know, whatever's in place at the state level or federal level, trying to implement those and making sure that we're able to comply and help people. And finally, the decriminalization of homelessness, so that is, those are actually buzzwords that are really floating around that whole thing of homelessness is even at the governor's, it's a state conference on homelessness, I can't think of the name of it. But that is their main topic every year is to talk about that specifically. So the Policy Subcommittee will look at, again, all of our policies and see what, if anything, could be changed or implemented, or promoted, or whatever, shared. So this evening's recommendation is simply that the council accepts this strategic plan. Again, it is a community plan. It's not necessarily saying that the city is committing to anything in particular within that plan. Obviously, there's a lot of things that we need to look at and discuss, all of the subcommittees. And then what we really are committing to is on the policy side, is that we are committing that we're going to look at our policies. And a complete plan can be found on our website. And that is it, did you have any questions?
Any questions?
You were talking about rental rehabilitation, what is that that they're talking about trying to do?
Well, so like the city has our owner occupied housing rehab program, so we get funds from the state in order to make improvements to homes. So it would basically be the same thing, but it would be for rental units. A big part of that would be more on the public housing or the Section 8 housing, which is managed by Pinal County. They could get funding to make improvements to their buildings that they own and also that they put money into for rent. So I think that's one of the key things. Not necessarily that the city would have a rental rehab program, because right now, the funding from the state is not there. But, so it just depends on funding, but it would essentially be the same thing to fix up these rental units that are not really to standard.
Anyone else?
I just had a question going off of what Chip said. Now, when you look for funding for rental rehabilitation, would that be, would that be organizations that are nonprofit? That would be funded with something like that, or anybody that's a for-profit that has rentals for profit? Would they be able to receive funding as well?
Right, so again, the city hasn't looked at an opportunity to do that type of program because of that very reason. But under like the public housing where it is owned by the Pinal County, and they could make improvements, then they would seek the funds. Whether or not we, as a city entity, decide to do a program like that is something that remains to be seen. But it doesn't mean that someone else couldn't do some type of program. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors to look at and figure out, but generally speaking, a rental is usually a for-profit thing, so.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You'll see in the suggested motion that we said, we used the word acknowledgement. It's probably more appropriate to use a word like except, as explained in the title and in the staff memo. Of course, that's your decision of how you want to approach the motion to this, but I thought I'd note that because in the suggested motion, we use the word acknowledgement, and except probably holds a little more of a supportive tone, if you will.
Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move the receipt of the Apache Junction Strategic Plan on Homelessness as prepared by the Apache Junction Homeless Coalition be accepted, and the city staff continue to participate in these efforts with the coalition.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor?
Counselor Direction to Staff on Public Art and Establishment of a Public Art Commission.
Sorry, okay, so thank you again, Heather Patel. Last night, we had a lengthy discussion about our public art program and any associated ordinances that are required to be made in order to implement a program. So the direction to staff is simply to go ahead and make the commission ordinance, make the ordinances for the zoning code and to establish fees. And then, of course, at a later date, we would bring those back to you for your consideration and adoption. But this is just a direction to staff to proceed.
And for anybody watching this online or on cable channel, we discussed this last night and laid out how it would be and what the requirements would be. Do we have any further discussion among council?
Your honor?
Yes.
I would, you know, I know that this was quite detailed, but under who's going to be on the commission, I would really like to see more city residents and maybe do it like a four-city residents, three outside of the city. Not so much to worry about the category as far as performing arts, to just be involved in the arts, period. And I'd also like to talk about the percentage charge to businesses.
Okay, so.
Amongst us.
Right now, first, on the first question, it could be all seven Apache Junction residents.
Sure.
It depends who tries out, so that could work itself out, and we may not even have to address that. But what would you like to say about the 1%?
Well, because it's often been said that we need to help the small guy, the small guy. Should we have this set where a certain square footage, any building built over a certain square footage, or a certain number of employees have this, because it is a tax. I mean, that's what it amounts to. So should we just have it all-inclusive?
We will, I think Larry mentioned it last night, we will have some sort of scale on different variations of square footage or new or commercial versus, so we are going to be including all of that into the ordinance, and we'll definitely share that with the council.
Those were the two things that kind of stuck out at me.
Yes.
I'd like to address the first. I agree, I would like to see more people from Apache Junction on rather than the one specified.
Right.
However, I would hate to see it specified that all seven would be from Apache Junction because we have a vast group of artists who live in Gold Canyon and support our community heavily. And they are really interested in seeing this artwork go in. So if it could be written in such a manner that we are encouraging those folks as well as everyone, I just really think that's important to include that art community, otherwise, we're cutting off our nose to spite our face, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree with that completely, and up by the mining camp also, which isn't Gold Canyon, there's a lot of artists there. And you look at a lot of our founding, like Tom Collinborne wasn't from Apache Junction, he lived in East Mesa. A lot of people like that, you know, that are, they have their roots here and they love the area, but narrowing them down into the little box might not be the best, we might be excluding some really talented people.
Yeah.
So we could have staff bring forward some options, maybe it's four of the seven need to be from, you know, at a minimum standard, you know. It could end up being all from, or it could be at least four on the commission, something like that. We'll bring forward some options.
I thought this discussion was just to get the ball rolling, that you guys were going to come back,
We will.
and we were going to have more future discussions to shape.
So we'll bring forward draft ordinances according to what's laid out in the memo, and you'll get a chance to dig in again on how it's written.
I just needed to see them draft it like this, knowing that so many of us were kind of shaky on that particular portion.
So do we need to address, because one of the issues that came up last night was the function of the Arts Commission as to whether they would approve art on the private businesses' property, and the city council would approve anything on the public land? Does that need to be addressed tonight, or is that something the staff's going to bring back?
If I may, or unless you want to address that.
Well, I was just going to say that the direction to staff is just for us to put something together. So those are just some things that were thrown out, probably a little bit premature last night, so I apologize for that. But I do have all of your comments from last night, and we can put together multiple different options and how that could look, and then you guys will be able to vote on that.
I have a thought on that. I think we do need to turn our boards loose more and give them the authority. Maybe we would have something like a fail-safe, that if there is some hideous thing being built, that we would have like a right of refusal. Is that possible to have that in there that, or not, maybe not a consensus, maybe?
There's a good example, well, if you want to address it, Joel, I was going to give an example of P&amp;Z and CUPs, how they can be appealed.
Yeah.
Someone could appeal them, and the council, it could be your call before the council.
The appellate procedure for conditional use permit is, right now, it didn't used to be, prior to 2014, it automatically go to council, it was just a recommendation. So in 2014, that changed, and so if someone didn't like the CUP, or they didn't like the terms, they would have to pay a fee, and then they would have to appeal to council. So there'd be, it could be that mechanism. There could also be another option, because we're talking about options. There could be something in the code that says if it's not at least a 5-2 decision, that it would go to council. If it's a 4-3 from P&amp;Z, then it would go automatically to council. You could have something like that structured in it too, and we can provide those options. And it was discussed among staff pretty heavily on whether it should be a recommendation body or a final authority body with the right of appeal. That's why you saw this new appeal process, because that was not in here in the original.
And also, we are allowed to communicate with the boards, correct? So they could be saying, hey, we got to, I mean, we could know some of these people and kind of get a glimpse of what they're working on, or we can watch their meetings, right?
The point of having an art commission, though, is to, for a recommendation body at least, is to not really interfere with them, and then get their recommendations. And that depends, if you want to have the commission as a final authority, then yeah, you can talk to them. But once again, if it gets appealed.
We may not need to do that, I mean, I just, it dawned on me, they'll be in this chambers, and they, we're recording most of the major boards now, so we could be watching, and we'll have an idea of what's coming up the pipe, yes.
So if I can make a suggestion, as Heather was referring to, we'll bring forward some draft ordinances, best practices, stuff we learned from the consultants, stuff we learned from your comments last night and tonight. And we'll have some draft ordinances, you can have it in draft form in a work session to go through and ask more questions, make changes, and we'll just go from there.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move that the following direction be given to staff regarding the Public Arts Commission, that staff researches alternate funding mechanisms for the commission and create the associated ordinances.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor?
Direction to staff on fiscal year 2019 and 2020 human services funding recommendations.
You want a motion?
Jennifer, why don't you lead off?
Yeah.
And then, if they want to discuss with any commission members again, they can.
So, last night, the council heard the recommendation from the Health and Human Services Commission. You had some questions for Chairperson Erickson. She is here tonight with those answers, if you'd like to hear from her. Otherwise, you can move forward with your motion and the contracts will be brought to the June 18th council meeting.
Any discussion?
Mayor, council members, Mary Erickson, Health and Human Services Commission. Last night, there were several questions and one of them was regarding CAFSA and its ability to get reimbursed for services from, they have one licensed provider and that's a very good thing to have, our licensed providers. However, they are not a licensed medical facility. Therefore, they cannot charge for services outside of what they receive. And they are putting a per-service item, or they're putting per-service reimbursement model together so that they can actually keep track of the residents that they are serving and the funds that are coming through the city are actually able to be documented per individual that is receiving that services. And if you have other questions?
Questions or discussion?
The other thing that I think in the future, we will look at additional questions for the applicants that will look at other sources of income. The commission was not aware of all of the fundraising following the application submission. And I think that can potentially make a difference in the recommendations. So, I think in the future, we will have a better handle on that.
And of course, all of these organizations can do fundraising, too. Nobody's...
Yeah.
Yes.
Hate to see them excluded because they're good fundraisers.
Yes.
And, you know, I also do want to make a comment that each one of the agencies that have applied for funds have done incredible work within our community. They are an extreme asset to the city of Apache Junction and the residents. And I know that every penny that is allocated to these agencies will be benefiting our residents. In the future, I hope that additional agencies will apply for the funding and particularly for new programming that will meet the gaps that we have within our community.
Any more questions? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mary, for all you've done this year.
Thank you.
It was a great presentation yesterday.
And I'd like to thank the other members of our commission, for we can't do it without the entire commission. So, thank you to them.
So, yeah, once again, for those watching online or on cable, we discussed this last night. If you want to watch that, go to yesterday's meeting. If no more discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Your honor, I move that the following direction be given to staff regarding fiscal year 2019, 2020, human services funding recommendation that the contracts for services as recommended by the Health and Human Services Commission be placed on the June 18th consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, sorry, Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor?
Okay, we're going to go back to the future, number eight. Presentation, discussion, public hearing on proposed ordinance number 1476, amending city code. Larry?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. This item was, for those watching on video, this was on the agenda last night, so I'll get that out of the way. So, if you want to see a presentation, that was last night, so we don't have a presentation tonight. We'll spare you of that. So, we did have this come to three different council work sessions. So, over the last three to four months, we've had three council work sessions. We do appreciate your help, your ideas. We have some ideas on gazebos and horse shades and manufactured homes and mobile homes. We've tried to incorporate those to the best we can, so we appreciate your patience with us as we've gone through these long work sessions. I did want to point out, as well as Joel indicated, this is a team effort. So, the ordinances, the actual text of the ordinances were assisted by Joel and Melissa in his office, so we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Joel, so we do appreciate him and his efforts. This is not a small task. This hasn't been done for 12 years. So, the last time we adopted the building codes were, was in 2012. And so, we were trying, you know, to get the fees updated, the building codes updated, et cetera, over the last year here. I did want to quickly explain the handout that we had provided and emailed earlier. And then, we can answer any questions, we can have a public hearing, and then you can let us know what direction Dave's here, obviously answer any questions. So, with the handout that we provided, the top of it are two proposed amendments dealing with the shade structures or gazebos, if you want to call them that. So, we did try to incorporate that language. And because we created that language, we actually had to go back and amend the top paragraph that deals with, oh, sure. All right. So, we did have to go back and look at detached accessory structure. So, we, Dave's added some language about whether, the difference between a, if you will, unenclosed or open-air structure versus an enclosed accessory structure. Both of them have to meet setbacks, so they still have zoning requirements. You can't put either one in your front yard, et cetera, et cetera. So, that relates to that and Dave's here to answer those. The alternatives below are relating to some options we gave for fences. So, I could explain alternative one is essentially status quo. So, if you like the way it's done now, alternative A is just how we do it today. The second one, alternative two, really is the first one, but with some nuances for the way the city is different than other municipalities because of FPEs, et cetera. Alternative three, I'll just call the Mesa approach. So, in that handout that we provided, Mesa says, okay, on the side and rear lot lines, if it's six feet or under, you don't have to have a permit. This essentially says, if you're going to put a fence in the front yard, you would need a permit. The fourth one is kind of a hybrid between, kind of, if you will, two, three, and four. So, it is the Mesa approach that kind of deals with kind of our unique circumstances with setbacks. So, I think that's really all I had. We're here for a public hearing. Dave and I are here to answer any questions. Again, there are three, there's two ordinances and a resolution. One ordinance essentially changes the name of the title of the department. The one, as you know, you adopt the resolution, so you don't publish it in the paper. And the third one is the ordinance and then the attached document is adopted by reference. And then, we adopt all the ICC codes by reference.
Larry, is also chapter three?
Chapter three is where it changes the name of the department. I think it's a very simple amendment. This, I can't read very well anymore. So, anyway, so that, those are the changes that are, were handed out. So, again, you can open it for a public hearing. We can answer questions now, however you want to.
Yes, so just to clarify, the item number eight is the real brief one where it's just changing the name.
Correct.
And then, the number nine is the resolution declaring, number 10 is a public record. And that's the bigger one, that was the 70 pager or whatever. That's number eight, nine, and 10.
And you can have one public hearing on it. You don't have to open it up three times to the public.
So, which one does the alternative language for exceptions go with? One, two, or three, or eight, nine, or 10?
It goes with the third, it really goes with nine and 10, because one, you're adopting by reference, those, the ordinance, you don't have to publish it in the paper.
Do they have to reference any changes in both, Joel? Or is it just number 10 that they'd have to?
It'd be number 10, the ordinance.
The ordinance itself.
Yes.
Robin, you had a question?
No, that answered the question. Thank you.
I promised Matt we'd be out of here by eight, so I'm not sure, Matt, if I'm okay with that.
How do we make Jennifer read the whole thing?
We'll be here after eight, then.
We say no instead of yes.
We'll baptize her.
Okay. In order, we would ask for any discussion among counsel and questions from Larry.
Well, I don't have any problems with the number one and number two on detached, enclosed, or unenclosed. Did you have any problems with those, Chip?
The, the way I'm understanding it and making sure it's correct is, it's A or B. Is that correct?
No, because we created B, we had to modify how a building under...
Okay, right.
The 120 or under. So, you still don't need a permit under 120. The major clarification is that it's enclosed. So, just to distinguish between an unenclosed, so if you have a open-air horse shade, that would be up to 200 square feet. It's unenclosed, no side walls, et cetera. And then, 1A calls it enclosed, so just to kind of differentiate between the two. So, one stays at 120, the other one's 200.
Okay, I don't have a problem with either of them.
Okay.
I mean, I was okay with those. Out of the alternatives on the fences, I like number four best. And I want to say why I like that one best, because Apache Junction, unlike Mesa and the other cities surrounding us, we still have a lot of roads that are only half of the road. A couple of years ago, on Acacia, when we paved Acacia and people were surprised where the road was because they thought that was their front yard and we took out trees and bushes, straightening the road to where it was supposed to be. If we had fence, front yard fences built in that area, we would have been taking those out besides paying for the trees and the shrubs and the mailboxes and everything that had to be replaced, we'd be paying and replacing fences. Is that not correct?
Well, I missed that meeting. I heard it was a pretty exciting meeting, but that's what I understand, is that a whole bunch of trees had to be replaced and moved, but that was like a Saturday morning meeting.
Was supposed to be.
Matt, will you call Councilmember Schroeder back?
Sure.
Do we have to replace?
Well...
Things that were in, were done incorrectly?
If I may, Councilmember, that was, well, I wouldn't say affectionately. It was called the Acacia massacre. Basically, some trees were taken out, some other, I think some mailboxes. And so, we got a claim from one of the individuals, actually from a few of the individuals. And so, we... Are you there, Mr. Schroeder?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the question is, what happened on Acacia some years ago? So, that's what we're talking about right now. And yes, we did make some settlement of those claims. Well, that was under a different city manager, so...
That was, that was not fences, that was vegetation.
It was vegetation and it was also some mailboxes, but it was done under a different administration. So, but the question I think Councilmember Barker has, do you have to pay? The answer is no, because the FPE is basically federally patented easement, is an easement and only an easement. And if people put fences in it or permanent improvements and a permit was never received from the city, then no, those things should not be there. And the city can order them to remove it. And if they don't, the city, if the city is going to improve the roadway, the city can do that. And they'll file a claim, but there really is no liability on the city.
Okay.
Okay, that was, that was part of the question.
And there was some years ago, I meant to talk about this, too. Before I got here, there was, I think in the, I think it was in your neighborhood, Ms. Barker?
Yes, it was.
There was a sewer line that was in an FPE and the city allowed them to put it in. And at one point, or maybe it was a gas line, I can't remember, I wasn't here. But basically, something had to be improved or the utility company had to get in there. And the city had to pay because the city had allowed with a permit, I believe.
The gas line, the city had permitted it.
So, that, it's good not to permit it when you don't have to. You shouldn't on an FPE. Never permit something unless it's a, an encroachment permit and it's an at-risk permit. We have done some of those. The hospital is a good example, and I think there's been a few others where there's a sign in the right-of-way and it's an at-risk permit. And they sign an agreement saying they will take it out at their expense if we ever expand the roadway.
So, we have mechanisms to deal with these things that get built without a permit in an easement. We have mechanisms to handling that. It's, the city's not liable if somebody builds something in an easement without a permit. If somebody gets a permit, the city approves it, and there turns out to be an error on the part of the city, then the city could have some liability. So, we have a mechanism. It seems like we're trying to deal with something when we already have a mechanism for dealing with it.
Your honor?
Yes.
I disagree with that analogy. We're being proactive. We're trying to help people. We're trying to say, hey, you gotta check this out. You cannot just willy-nilly determine that you're going to build whatever, wherever. This is a city. If you choose to live in a city, there are certain rules within the city. You need to follow them. Instead of coming around 10 years later and saying, oh, by the way, you're in the right-of-way and you now have to take your $2,000 block wall down or your $5,000 huge tree that now looks gorgeous and shades the front of your house has got to come out because you didn't ask. We're trying to help people. This is proactive. We're trying not to be reactive here. And I, you know, what's a fence permit? 25 bucks?
Let's ask Dave, because we don't, right now, we only do it if you're over six feet. So, I want to, you know what it is, Dave?
Well, it'd be a permit for that. It shouldn't be much, if anything.
Yeah, again, if, depending on what you do here, we would come back with chapter four. Again, I think some, some don't charge any fee for fence permits, some charge a nominal fee for an overcount of review. But right now, because there's engineering involved in a, something that's over six feet, we do engineering review and issue the permit, but I don't...
I think it's a per-linear foot.
Yeah.
Trying to remember off the top of my head, I think we did a...
But that's for six foot.
If it's over six.
Over six, yeah.
So, you wouldn't do that kind of thing for a three or four foot, well, three-foot fence in the front yard.
It could be a flat fee, it just wasn't included in what we just got through.
If it's a reasonable or no fee, I think it's, I think it's very wise of us to realize that this community is going to grow. It is not going to be 38,000 people in 10, 15 years. It may be double, it may be triple that, who knows? Why are we setting people up for failure by not having them check? I think one of the problems with number, with the second alternative is that you're presuming that people know they're in the right-of-way or that they know it's a federal patented easement. People don't know that. You know, I don't know exactly where the right-of-way is. I would have to come see you. Golly gee, go down, check it out, pay your 10 bucks or no bucks or whatever, and be sure you're in the right place. Save yourself or the future buyer of your beautiful home some trouble. Your honor?
Yes.
One of the reasons why I think this is so important is not only the fact of the right-of-way, the FPE, but when we expand south of the 60, we're not going to have any of these issues. There are going to be HOAs are going to be in charge of what can go in the front yard, what can't go in the, we have to worry about this part. So, I don't want to have a North Apache Junction look way out of line with what South Apache Junction is going to look like. And with all of this hodgepodge, you said...
going to look like. And with all of this hodgepodge, you said there was 120 right now fences in right-aways about?
I want to say 159 is what comes to mind, something like that.
It was 100 and some.
That's right.
159.
Yeah. I'd like to send all of them letters and notify so that we don't end up five years, 10 years from now, having 400 and some in the right-aways that have to be moved. Because we all know, it's not a simple no, the city doesn't have any liability, and it's never that easy. It's always feelings are hurt, people are pissed, they're getting a group together, they're gonna, you know, that mean old city. So I think it's been, like Robin said, a proactive approach, that there's, you don't have to worry about the backyard. It's just the front yards and our streets, because too many of our streets are only still half streets. They're not the full 66 feet wide, they're the 33 feet wide. So one side of the street really could easily put a fence in the right-of-way.
North, North Apache Junction's never going to look like South Apache Junction. It's going to look like it is. I mean, there's going to, there's not going to be horses down south of there. So I don't know that that really worked. And that's why a lot of people choose to move out here, too, is because of that look and the feel.
Yeah, you don't want the subdivision look when you're having your ranches and your horses and that. But that doesn't mean we have to look like we're the patchwork quilt part either. We can have a safety, we can have normal, not extraordinary, just normal laws down that not only protects the people, but it protects the city.
And this doesn't really add to the conversation either, but that vegetation that got torn out a few years ago, up where Joel lives and on the outskirts of Tucson, they do have vegetation that comes right up to the sides of the roads, and it looks really cool. It really adds to the...
Well, the other thing, too, as far as going 10 years and being proactive, we've already concluded that we need to be looking at these ordinances every three to five years. I can't imagine that we're going to spend, we're going to keep going 10 and 15 years before looking at them. So as we do grow, we will continue to keep looking at these and changing them as we need to change them. I have a question as far as the structuring of fence. Your average fence material, and I think, I think where Chip and I are coming from in this, is that we own large lots that are horse property. And so maybe that's where Chip and I see it a little differently. The materials that you buy come in five and six-foot heights for the type of uses that we would have. They come standard five and six-foot. If I build, if I, right now, if I were to build a block wall, I have to construct, not that I know a lot about construction, but you have to dig a footing, use rebar and whatnot. If I build a three or four-foot block wall, don't I have to have an engineer or some kind of plans? Or can I just build any kind of a block wall?
So in general, around the valley, it's just understood that the standard six-foot wall with the H-block and then the narrower ones that come in, that at up to six feet, and in some places, they've raised that to seven, that that construction is going to do, be all right. So that's, you know, part of why our, the rationale for over six feet is now you start adding wind load that you haven't accounted for, and you do need that design. But under six feet, there's, we wouldn't require it. Retaining walls, which are different because they have earth on one side and nothing on the other, those do need engineering at a lower threshold. Usually, it's after four feet. So, but, and some people get those confused, but just a regular block wall that's just being used to fence off or whatever, if it's at six feet, it's, there's not any engineering that would be required.
And so for that reason, I would be interested in looking at differentiating between the materials. There's no climb fencing, and there's actually constructing a wall. I can go and buy materials that are already constructed, these, whatever, wooden fence panels, I think, or six-foot.
Prefab.
Prefab, that's the word I'm looking for. There's a huge difference between putting that up and constructing a, I wouldn't want to construct a block wall. I wouldn't trust it. I don't know how to build one. And so for that reason, I can see you're constructing something. You're, that's a little bit different than putting up something prefab. That I can go with. But to put up a, but to use materials that are prefabbed, I just, to me, I just don't, I don't agree with that. The other thing that I'm struggling with is that a couple of us have acknowledged that with the glitch with getting the email and the attachment not being in the, on the agenda, it wasn't, this, this version wasn't fully read. And so that concerns me. I want to be able to read everything. And I mentioned it last night. So I have a concern with moving forward with that tonight.
Let's go to Robert. Robert, do you have anything? I know you didn't really get everything either, did you?
I spent a good portion of the day going over the whole thing. You know, there's a lot of the, a lot of the technical things about the fences and the setbacks, you know, I get. I think some of my major concerns with the ICC is the overreach that the government can have on people's, you know, private lives. I think that's a little, a little drastic going over a few of these things. I mean, codes are codes, every city has them. They vary here and there. But in general, it seems pretty basic stuff as far as codes go. I just, the, the authority they have over the citizens of the city in that department is a little scary to me.
Is there anything specific that would help us alleviate some of those concerns in any way, or is it the whole code? Or, I'm not sure exactly how we could, or is that more just a statement that it is what it is?
Well, like, for example, the administrative enforcement, Building Safety Manager hereby authorized to direct and enforce provisions of the chapter technical codes. You know, let me get to the part that's interesting.
Anybody else didn't understand what we're talking about?
Okay, so.
Is there a specific A?
Adoptable procedures order to clarify the application of their provision, such interpretation policies shall be in compliance with the intent of this chapter of the technical. Basically, I'm reading A, and it's saying that the Building Safety Manager can interpret this code in a way he feels, and then adopt provisions to make its interpretation correct. Which basically means that, you know, it says this, but I can say it says this, and then I can add this to it to say it says this. Did I read that correctly?
So where are you talking about? Exact, what, do you know what page?
It's page nine, Administration Enforcement, Duties and Powers, A.
Okay. So some of it is going to depend on who you have, I guess, acting as the Building and Safety Manager. The, you know, in my training and background, I know that there are resources, there's commentary, there's other, you know, manuals and books and stuff. And so I think a responsible, you know, Building and Safety Manager is going to make sure that if they're making a decision, that there's some valid rationale. I think a city attorney has to do something similar, that there's not, everything can be covered in detail. And so you kind of have to figure out what's the best way and, you know, what was the intent. So, you know, one of the values with me is that I actually have sat through the code hearings, and in doing that, you hear the arguments for and against, you hear different engineers, you hear different architects, you have different, you know, just regular citizens that are concerned about something. So you get to understand the rationale behind something, why it was approved or not approved. And so I think those are important parts of the, you know, that position and stuff like that. And I understand there's a concern that this can be abused, but I think that is applicable to a lot of different departments that we have. So there is, you know, some oversight. That's what the Construction Board of Appeals is for. And, you know, if somebody believes there's overreach, then they can take it there. So.
At a cost, is that correct? At a cost, to the Construction Board of Appeals, that would be at a cost. And I can understand where Robert's coming from with leaving things up to the discretion. I understand what you say, that we can't have every little detail in black and white lined out. You have different situations that come along. But I think we need to have as much clarification as we can. And I agree, when you leave it up, when you have something that says you're leaving it up to the interpretation of somebody, I can certainly understand, because that's one of the things, I can't speak for the others, but I get that, that biggest complaint from citizens is that, why does it left up to the discretion of an administrator? I get that a lot.
Well, Your Honor.
Yes.
I see both sides.
Robert.
Well, like Dave, for example, I mean, you're seasoned in your, in your field. You know, you know a lot, and so you know how to, you know, maneuver around these things. But like, number C, it says you, you shall, which shall was defined to me at the beginning of this as it's mandatory, have the authority to appoint deputy building, safety managers, permit technicians, technical officers, inspector, plan examiner. I mean, for you know it, you have an entire team with people who may not be as seasoned in your field as you are, going out and doing these jobs. And then, and then it comes back to, back on your shoulders to have to interpret what they're saying. So, and that could be, I would think, a cost to the city if, if three, four years down the road, you have a staff of five people running these code violations. And according to this, you would have every right to hire these people. Is that correct?
Budget process. Well, yeah. I mean, I don't think that's describing any different than how we have it set up. Now, there's employees of the department, they report to a manager, in this case, it's Dave, who reports up through a director, and all hiring takes place under the city manager. I think it's just acknowledging in this code, or this suggested code, of how to clarify some of those administrative functions.
Existing employees and appoint these in these positions?
I'm sorry, say that again?
So they would, you would take, like, an existing employee of the city and, and put these, put them in these positions?
There are.
To do these, think these duties around the city.
So I think part of it is just establishing the legal standard that the Building and Safety Manager doesn't have to do everything, that he is allowed to allocate out some of the responsibilities. So I don't think you want an office of, you know, all building officials, you know, there's different levels and different duties that need to be done, and some of them can be done by somebody that is an inspector, and then somebody that's a plan reviewer. I think part of it is just, you know, making it, there is, just like the fire chief has power, the building official does have power, they, they have a huge responsibility to protect the safety. And so to, in, you know, allow that to happen, there has to be certain authority. And so, you know, this, this language is not, I mean, it's taken from Mesa, it's the same probably in every, you know, other ordinance you're going to look at around the valley. So I don't know of anybody that's done it differently. So...
That's what I wanted to know. Was this like a boilerplate type?
Best practices of East Valley cities, yeah.
I mean, and it comes out of the code.
They all say this, basically.
Chip, you want to?
So you're taking the city code of a metropolitan area and wanting to apply it to a sweeper town, for lack of a better term, like Apache Junction?
A horse community.
I agree with that. We're, we're not that urban, is what he's saying, is we are more, more of a countryfied town, where people can go to Home Depot and just put up a slot wood fence. Let's go to Chip for a bit here.
One of the questions I had for the front yard fence, and if I remember right, if you're going to have a block wall, the current requirement is, is that it can go up to six foot, the top two feet have to be basically a sense of see-through?
That's the zoning provision. So the zoning provision says in the front yard setback of all residential districts, you can have a six-foot fence, the top two have to be see-through. That's what the zoning code says. What this is getting at is, does it or does it not need a permit? So say you live on an acre and a quarter lot, RSGR, you can build a six-foot fence that's totally all block, but you got to put it 40 feet back. So if you want to put a fence between your 40-foot front yard setback and your lot line, then it's four feet plus two feet opaque. But that's, that's in the zoning code provision. This is dealing with whether or not, when do you get a permit? At what point do you get a permit? Do you get a permit?
Okay. We're, are we at an impasse? Are we still discussing?
I'd like to have more time, Your Honor. You know, and I explained last night, and I explained again today, why.
On, on all three of these, that's the way. Joel, is that how it would go?
It sounds like that there might be support to have a motion to continue. So it'd be for all three, because they are all connected.
And how many years in the making is this?
Oh, well, I mean, Dave has been working on this for a while. I've looked at it, but...
So another couple of weeks is, for the betterment of the citizens is...
Well, and also, if you do change, if you do want to do that, I mean, I'll have to change the, the effective dates, but that's, that's easy to do. That's just in the ordinances and the resolution. And...
Depending on when you push it out to. Right now, it goes into effect July 1st, so...
July 8th.
July 8th. So if you adopted it two weeks from now, and you may not, if you do, then July 8th still works. If you push it out beyond that, then we have to amend it.
Yes. I mean, typically, you want 30 days at least, but you can go shorter than that if you want to, if you have an effective date clause, which we do.
Despite what the council chooses to do and what the motion is tonight, we still have to open it up for a public hearing, correct?
On all three items, yes.
Yes.
You have one public hearing on all three items.
Let's, let's do that right now. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on any of these three issues? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is anybody going on vacation in the next few weeks?
I'll be here in two weeks.
So can we call for motions now?
What is the next meeting?
How far out do you want to go? Do you want more time? Do you want to?
Is there, let's discuss. Two weeks is enough, don't you, do you think? I mean, because we just needed a few more days because it came to us so late.
So, do you want to do a work session again on it, and then vote on it Tuesday night?
Can we do it back to back? Is that's the suggestion?
Yeah.
I think that works well.
A back-to-back would be good.
June 17th.
17th.
And June 18th.
And 18th. Can anybody put that in a motion?
June 17th.
What was the date again? I'm sorry.
June 17th.
Work session for the 17th. 18th would be the public hearings.
17th and 18th. I move that, can I put them all together?
Yeah.
I think you should do motions for each one.
Okay. Let me get back to, I went from one to the other. So eight would be...
So we have to have the reading of the ordinance?
So we have to have it read by title only before we...
No, you don't, because there's a, there'd be a motion to continue.
Okay. So I move that ordinance number 1476 be continued to the work session on June 17th and the regular council meeting on June 18th.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
A motion on 1914?
Okay, I move that resolution number 19-14 be continued until the work session of June 17th and the regular session June 18th.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
An motion on 1475.
Move that ordinance number 1475 be continued to the work session on June 17th and the regular session on June 18th.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Prove a meeting on the next meeting dates and times.
Your Honor, I move an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM be held on Monday, May? Monday, June 17th?
Yes.
2019, and executive, executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 BM be held on Tuesday, June 18th in the City Council Conference Room, the City Council Chambers, 300 East Superstition Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, we have no call to the public, and I believe the city business is done. We will be adjourned.